Our apologies for starting late. With that, we'd like to go ahead and call the regular city council meeting to order on Tuesday, July 18th, 2017. This time, we'd like to invite Deacon Mario Ortega up from Our Lady of Grace Catholic Church to give us our invocation. We'd like everyone to please stand, and please note that after the invocation, we will be having a presentation by our police honor guard. And so if we can please keep the center aisle clear while we're standing, we'll take the presentation from there. Thank you.
Dedicated to you, eager to do what is right. Your grace has moved the hearts of these, your friends, to love you more deeply and to serve you more generously. We ask that you bless them so that they may tell of your wonderful deeds and give proof of them in their lives. We also ask that you bless this council today, who have come to serve the people of this great city. Bless our police officers and firemen and their families. May they come home each day safe to their loved ones. For this, we pray. Amen.
Firefighters, firefighters, police officers, all ready, march!
Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice.
Forward, march!
Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to thank Deacon Mario Ortega. We appreciate your service and for the prayer this evening. Also really like to thank the honor guard who has stood so patiently in the back waiting for us to get started. So again, we are indeed grateful. With that, we'd like to move to the roll call, please.
Councilmember Gussi?
Here.
Councilmember Chapados?
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Great. That takes us to item three on the agenda tonight. As you can see, there's quite a few people here, which we're very excited about. We are going to issue a proclamation. The Maricopa Police Department is turning 10 years old, and so we are doing this celebratory anniversary session for them this evening. So with that, I will come down there. Counsel, we also, because we're having some of the difficulties, after the proclamation, we're going to show a short video here, and I don't want you guys to miss it. So if you'll all come down there with us as well, that'd be great. Thank you. So as you know or may not know, the City of Maricopa Police Department is again is 10 years old this year. This is quite the accomplishment. And for reasons you probably may not know is that as a young city, it's not something that automatically happens. And I think we think that it does, but it really doesn't. And it takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of effort, it takes a lot of service, a lot of hours to make something like a police department not only come out of the dust from nothing, but to make it operational, make it effective, and make it efficient. And so today, I'd like to read this proclamation. It says, "Whereas prior to the Maricopa Police Department, the City of Maricopa received law enforcement services from the Pinal County Sheriff's Office. And whereas 10 years ago, in July of 2007, the City of Maricopa created the Maricopa Police Department. And whereas the population of the City of Maricopa for 2007 was estimated at 37,549, Chief Patrick Melvin, appointed by the city manager, commanded a department comprised of 17 employees. Whereas the population of the City of Maricopa for 2017 was estimated at 48,374, and the city limits of Maricopa cover 43 square miles, Chief Steve Stahl, appointed by the city manager, commands a department comprised of 88 and a half, but 88 employees, and we're very appreciative for that. Whereas the City of Maricopa Police Department is the youngest municipal police department in the state of Arizona and has evolved into a full-service, nationally accredited agency, the Maricopa Police Department's vision is making every contact excellent. Now therefore, I, Christian Price, Mayor of the City of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim July 18th, 2017, as Maricopa Police Department's 10th Anniversary Day in the City of Maricopa, and it is dated this, the 18th day of July, 2017. Congratulations." (APPLAUSE) and congratulated the officers. I believe my response is and will continue to be, this is your celebration just as much as it is our celebration. You deserve the best possible police department. You deserve the best possible service, and it is my job to provide you that with the best possible people. We can purchase buildings, technology, equipment to make our jobs better, safer, and hopefully easier, but you can't do anything without outstanding people. The people in the front row have been here since the beginning, so we owe them a lot.[613.54][613.54](APPLAUSE). At the same time, I've had the extreme honor to serve at least three different councils, couple different mayors, and I know that these people have served other councils and other mayors. We've received outstanding support, and you can't have a safe city without outstanding support from our elected leaders, both current and past, and our citizens that continue to keep growing and continue to help us, help us get better at what we do, provide us input, whether it's constructive, whether it's critical, or whether it's positive. It's all taken to heart so that we can become a better police department, a safer community for all of you. In closing, before we show the video, I'd like to thank not only the officers, but the You have given, the command staff, myself, Commander Hughes, Commander Clor before that, and now Commander Capping, you've given all of us the journey, the ability to lead, and you've displayed faith in us to keep your loved ones safe. We take that very seriously. But we also take the support that you give us to heart. Thank you for your support. Thank you all for all of this.[726.43][726.43](APPLAUSE). And I represent the Maricopa Police Department, who represent you, the community. We're standing here on the ground where it all started, where leaders and police officers came together with a vision. Not just an empty parking lot, not just a bunch of dirt, but a vision, a vision that was bigger than themselves. They wanted to start something to help this community, help somebody bigger than themselves.
I wanted to be a part of something new.
I am. Initially, a chief and an assistant chief was hired, and then myself and two other officers were hired to take on the role as sergeants. We had nothing, we had no uniforms, we had no badges, no guns, so we picked all of those things, and it was pretty challenging picking the right type of uniform and the right type of badge and writing policy and just developing an entire police department.
So in 2007, the department started with 15 employees. There was 13 that were actually sworn officers, and there was two that were actually assigned to us for property and evidence and for IT department.
When we first started, we had people from PCSO, from the county of Maricopa, we had you know, City of Mesa, City of Phoenix. We were truly a melting pot, and there was not the Maricopa way. It was everybody else's way of how to do things.
I was fortunate enough to be part of the first motor units here, so myself and my partner Pete Torres went out and started to tackle the traffic incidents that we were having. At that time, Maricopa was having at least one or two fatalities a month that were seriously related to speed. Within that first year, we took that down to one that had happened.
And it wasn't an easy startup. We had our bumps along the way, but overall, I think we, for those of us that are still here from the beginning, I think we're still pretty proud of what we do.
So when the department started, we had trailers that were donated to us from the City of Phoenix. The departments were moved in, they were pieced together, and they were made to be what was not only City Hall, but was the police department. They didn't have floors in them. There were certain areas you couldn't walk in because you were afraid you were going to fall through.
It's constantly moving. When I first signed up, they asked me, "What did you want to do here?" And I came here because I wanted to start a department. And since day one, it's just been a lot of changes and sometimes very fast. So it's good, it's good. It was really tough.
So in the summer of 2014, we moved from the trailers into the main police station that's located next to City Hall. We implemented a special response team. From there, we implemented our body worn cameras program. We implemented our accreditation, which was a big one for us to be accredited, to be able to show that our practices and our procedures are in line with everybody else, which is known as best practices. From there, we invented our "Making Every Contact" vision statement, which the chief implemented and which we live by today, in 2017. We want to make sure that we live by that vision statement of making every contact excellent.
Being part of the Maricopa Police Department from the very beginning, that was just amazing to be, you know, offered the opportunity to come and be part of it, literally, I mean, I would say from the ground up.
So in 2016, we opened the Copper Sky Substation on the south end of the City of Maricopa. We were able to become part of the RWCU. With that, we were able to get a tower that's located here in the City of Maricopa, which gives us broader coverage to not only run our system, but to be partners with other people on the RWC. We also implemented a fully operational communication center. Tonight, we're dispatched, we take our own 911 calls from here in the city. We implemented the Community Action Team, which was a grant-based team that follows the President's Task Force, and we've continued to grow from there.
There's been those challenges that you don't expect or that you have to work through, but hopefully in the end, it makes everything worthwhile and for the better.
In the last 10 years, we've created the Maricopa way, and it's turned out very well. The Maricopa way is doing things the very best that we can for the community, making sure that we leave people better off after we leave than when we got there. That's the Maricopa way.
I think the best thing about the Maricopa Police Department is that we're a department that's engaged in the community. We work with our community, we're transparent, we give 110% to our community. It has been a wonderful 10 years, and I hope for many more.
We are here at the latest addition to the Maricopa Police Department, the Copper Sky Substation. Because of your support and because of the great work of the men and women of the Maricopa Police Department, the sworn, the civilian, and the volunteer staff, this building and all of the additions to the Maricopa Police Department have come into existence. Our vision statement, "Making every contact excellent," is what we strive to do every single day. And I guarantee you, that is in the first and foremost thought of the men and women as they go out each and every day. Your community support has made this all happen, a decade of growth for the Maricopa Police Department, and we have a great decade in advance as we will continue to grow and continue to write on this blank slate to make our community the best ever.[1110.13][1110.13](APPLAUSE). Well, thank you again. Thank you for that wonderful presentation and that video. We also have a card to present to the Maricopa Police Department, just signed by your council. Again, many, many thanks for all that you do. I'll give this to Chief Stahl.[1141.13][1141.13](APPLAUSE). Now, the fun wouldn't be complete if we didn't give something away, right? And so what we've decided to do is we've decided to give away a meal with Chief Stahl. Now, depending on your perspective, that could be a really good thing or a really bad thing. So I hope none of you are in trouble that are into this drawing, but if you're not, that's good, and the next problem is going to be is you're going to have to get his cheap rear end to buy you a really good meal. So that's another challenge. You'll have to work through that one after you win. So with that, let's go ahead and do a drawing here. So if you have your little blue tickets, you might want to pull those out now, and we're just going to go by numbers. So the number is 640-204. 640-204. Let's see, anyone? Got to be present to win. Going once, going twice, gone. All right. All right. Try that again. 640-188. All right, all right, congratulations. Come on up, Carol.[1241.83][1241.83](LAUGHTER). So we're going to let everyone filter out here in just a second. While we're doing that, we want to let you know about, can I get down? Sorry. I want to let you know about one other thing we had the opportunity to do today, and that is we were able to host a wonderful group of young men and women from Africa, and they're called the Mandela Fellows. And so they are from countries all over Africa. They are very well-respected in their individual fields. They vary in a variety of different topics, from folks working as treasurers to fire chiefs, but a lot of them are working with their individual countries. And so again, it's a real honor for us to have them here today. They are witnessing some of the form of government that we have, as their forms of government are similar and yet different. It's been a fascinating conversation to hear about those. We tend to get in our little bubble, and we think that's the only way things happen. And so sometimes it's good to get out and see the rest of the world, and they're setting a great example. They're here through ASU, and they have been here before, not this particular group, but an additional cohort that was here last year. And so we are pleased and honored that they would be here. So we'd invite all of them up to come up, and we'd like to give them a round of applause. Yeah, I know, I know. We had the mic rigs fixed up there for a while.
I know.
Yeah, at least. All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to item four, the report from the mayor. I was kindly reminded that today is actually Nelson Mandela's birthday, so a wonderful time at Mandela Day, Mandela Fellows. So again, we thank all of you for being here, and we are honored by your presence, so we appreciate it. At this time, we'll keep it very short, as we've spent so much time on other things. Just had the opportunity to do a variety of things in this past a little bit. Obviously, we had the Fourth of July celebration, A.DOT meetings, I have an A.DOT meeting here coming up this coming week. Just like Vice Mayor Brown said in an earlier report, had the opportunity to go to the Lower Santa Cruz River Alliance meeting, probably the most well-attended meeting. Also, members of almost every member of the staff of our congressional delegation, including our senators, were there and present. They're very aware of the problem and the issues that face Maricopa when it comes to a flooding perspective. It's not, and I think that brings it back into focus as we look at the disaster that happened in Payson. You know, I was reflecting on that, if you haven't followed the news much, that there were nine folks that died up near Payson in a watering hole up there called Water Wheel. And I was just up there with my family here less than a month ago, swimming in that exact same hole. And it was almost by accident that we were there. We were supposed to go to another location, Tonto National Bridge, and in the process, decided not to do that and decided to go there instead. And it was a wonderful experience, but I think about how quickly the conditions here in the desert can change, and that's clearly what happened here. There was something, it didn't even rain there, and yet it flooded, and it caused lots of destruction and disaster and the loss of human life. And that is exactly what we talk about when the City of Maricopa talks about flash flooding issues that can happen here. When this city has been three feet underwater, four feet underwater, it happened, and it's going to happen again. And I don't mean to be a pessimist, I am looking forward to the solutions and the fixes we're trying to accomplish. But the reality is, is that the fact of the matter is it's what keeps me up at night, and it will happen again. And guess what? It didn't rain here either when that flooding happened. So the same thing that just happened in a sister city of ours, Payson, can happen here. And that's, I think, what this council stays awake late up at night, trying to figure out and working closely with the U.S. Corps of Engineers, all of our congressional delegation, our U.S. senators, et cetera, and anything we can do to get that message out to say how important it is that we fix this issue. And I think that, and what I hope you see is that these are why our decisions have reflected in the recent weeks, this type of mentality, because it's upon us. It can happen anytime, and it typically happens when these monsoons and these heavy rains happen, and it doesn't have to rain here to happen. So again, not to belabor the point, but I just want you to know that these are the things that we think about, this is what we're working towards, and what we're trying to accomplish when we're trying to make sure that the quality of life here and that the public safety and the enjoyment that each person has living here continues on for many generations to come. So with that, I'll turn the time over to the report from the city manager.
Honorable Mayor, council members, just two items. First, I want to recognize and congratulate all of our officers for 10 years of existence. They do a phenomenal job. Difficult work, as all of you know, and they make it seem pretty easy. I also want to recognize and thank the Mandela Fellows for coming out and joining us for at least half a day. I want to also commend ASU for the program that they do and their sponsorship. It really is something special, and I hope to stay in contact with many of you, and in fact, all of you, far into the fact, all of you, far into the future. And if you ever have questions as it relates to our form of government, happy to, at any point, respond. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Rose, appreciate it. At this time, we'll move into the call to the public. As you know, this is the time in which we open it up for the public to come and tell council what's on your mind. We'd love to hear from you. If you have a concern or a question or something that I want you to know we can't respond to, it's not because we don't want to, but because of the legal ramifications, we're not allowed to respond, because it hasn't been agendized in the 24-hour period. But it is not that it's not important. And so we want to hear from you, and we'd make sure that the staff talks with you. And of course, we're always available afterwards to talk offline, and then we can move that issue forward. So with that, I'll turn quickly and first and foremost to our speaker cards. First off, I have a speaker card for Tammy Crawford for Atlas Pet Rescue. Tammy, are you here? Come on up. Tell us what's on your mind. Just by way of information, we typically have a three-minute timer up here, just to make sure that we have everyone that has an opportunity to address this can. Thank you, Tammy.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and our citizens. I'm here today to talk to you about Atlas Pet Rescue. It is a 501(c)(3) that I recently established here in February of 2017, and we are looking to provide a comprehensive animal shelter. This way?
Perfect.
Thank you. All I can hear is my feedback.
You're okay.
But anyway, we're wanting to build a comprehensive animal shelter that would work in conjunction with Pinal County Animal Control, as well as the City of Maricopa and other smaller rescues. This facility is something that will take care of cats, dogs, and horses, and it will also provide pets and resources for our veterans, as well as for community service. So folks that need to do community service, that would provide a volunteer basis for them to do that as well. Like I said, we are a 501(c)(3). This building that you have in your packet there, and forgive me for the horrid pictures that I shared with you.
No, they're great.
But if a lot of you know that somebody moves, they don't take their pet with them, they just leave it. This city is growing so fast, and by the way, I really love this city, that's why I'm here right now. It's growing so fast that for every household, there's usually another pet. And for every six households, there's sometimes as many as 10, just because most people who have pets have more than one. And so this would provide a low-cost, spanneuter clinic for the public, as well as veterinary care, comprehensive veterinary care for the animals in this shelter. Now, I keep using the word shelter and rescue, and I want you to understand, this is not like six kennels in a backyard. We're talking about $2.8 million worth of facility that we're wanting to put in here. Classy, classy facility, someplace that you can come and bring your kids and play at the dog park with. I know we have a dog park, a really nice one, but we want to add to that, we want to enhance that. As far as location, we don't have the location yet, but we are looking at a few areas. One is off the Hind option, and the other one is actually between 347 and Casca Grande Highway. So depending on development for the city, but of course, depend on which side of the street we try to move on. So anyway, I really hope that Atlas Rescue has your support, and we would love to be part of the community on a very big level.
Thank you, Tammy, we appreciate it. Thank you for letting us know about that. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call up Shelley Gillespie. Give us some updates on the Copa Shorts Film Festival.
I will lower this, so you're not talking to my eyebrows. Good evening, and it's wonderful to see you all again. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, the entire council, and, yeah, and City Manager Rose. I'm sorry, I'm getting stumbling here. We have had some major, important, fun things happening with the Copa Shorts Film Fest. I've handed you a handout that's two-sided that shows an ambitious program we hope to fund, so that we can have programs for future filmmakers. We call it filmmaker in training. And this is something that was proposed by the library, and we're hoping to do that in conjunction with them and all of your help, because it's going to be a fun thing. We've been having a lot of people calling us and contacting us, people who are homeschool moms, all sorts of people whose kids want to be involved with film. And we're happy to have that and have that happen. Since we last spoke, we've had some very exciting things happen. We were awarded the Arizona Commission on the Arts grant for festivals, so that's a big thing, it's exciting. Not enough to fund this program by any way, but we also have that as another feather in our cap for all the hard work we've been doing. We've been working also on another program that we are launching in September. We have three facilities this time of the Central Arizona College campuses, where we're going to be here in Maricopa, as well as at the Signal Peak and also Santan Campus, because we felt we had to be fair and kind of spread out for the whole county, so people have that opportunity. So that's one of the programs we'll be doing. And if you look at Eventbrite, all but one of the programs are now posted there, and anyone can register, anyone of any age, anybody sitting here, any of you, you're welcome to come to those programs. We're going to have fun. In the mornings, we'll talk about things involving screenplays. In the afternoon, we'll have hands-on things for, things having to do with filming and all the elements of it. So that's a condensed kind of thing for what we would do for students here for eight months next year. So we have wonderful things planned, and of course, the festival itself. Instead of just two workshops at the festival for education, we're going to have four. And we're trying to reach everybody we can to give them a wonderful opportunity, to bring them to the city. We've been hearing from people, and we've started receiving films. We encourage everyone to submit films and screenplays. We've had some from a number of different states. We're getting quite a few high school ones, not necessarily from here yet. And so it's just very exciting to see all these programs and projects. But I thank you for your support, and especially thank you, Councilmember Nancy Smith, for joining us again. And that was a special feeling for us, because that was a very difficult week, so we really appreciated that. But thank you all for your help, your support, and all the wonderful things you've been doing to help make this a great place for everyone in the city. Thank you again.
Thank you so much, Shelley, appreciate it. The mic is open to anyone who'd like to approach us this time. I have no more speaker cards, so if you, something's on your mind, come on up. Come on up, Pat. Just say your name for the record.
Patrick Lacy, Thunderbird Farms. When I was up here earlier, my good longtime friend Julia signed my book, and I realized that it might cause some jealousies and hardship amongst the rest of the council. Would you be willing, after the meeting, to sign all of my historic book for the Maricopa Archives?
We'd be honored to.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I charge for my signature, though. Anyone else at this time? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public and on to the business at hand. Council, we have minutes 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3 that needs a motion for approval, please.
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes at this time? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We have no public hearings to attend to. That'll take us to the consent agenda, which is item nine. As you will recall from work session, we did leave and discuss the stipulations that needed to be amended in item 9.8. So I need a motion to approve items 9.1 through 9.12, please. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on these items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And that takes us to the regular agenda item for this evening. At this time, we'd like to hit item 10.1. The mayor and city council shall discuss the possibility action on making an appointment to the Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee. This is for discussion and action. I believe this appointment is for Councilmember Smith. Just as, by way of information for our fellows in the audience, we did discuss committees earlier, and in the discussion of the committees, we talked about how we do and make appointments to these committees. This is the Cultural Affairs Committee, and this is Councilmember Smith's appointment, at which point, if approved by the council, that person would serve co-terminously with Councilmember Smith's term. So Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce you, if you don't already know her, which is almost impossible, because she's always around and being a servant to our city, Grace Robinson. Grace, would you please stand? So Grace and I spoke, and I'm very excited to recommend her for appointment to the Cultural Affairs Committee.
So Grace Robinson is the nominee for the Cultural Affairs Commission. We have a motion, we have a second from Councilmember Manfredi. Any further discussion on this nominee? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations, Grace.
Congratulations.
Item 10.2 is an ordinance to the mayor and city council of the City of Maricopa, Arizona, levying separate amounts to be raised for the primary and secondary property tax levies upon each $100 of the assessed valuation of property subject to taxation within the City of Maricopa for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. This is for discussion and action. Brenda, take it away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. This is our final action for the fiscal year 1718 budget. The taxing in Maricopa involves multiple taxing authorities. There are the County, Maricopa Unified School District, State School Equalization, Community College, Special Districts, and the city. There are two types of city property tax levies. One is the primary property tax, which supports the operations of the city. This property tax levy increase is restricted by state statute to a limit of 2%. The original property tax, primary property tax levy was passed in November of 2006 to support public safety. The secondary property tax levy supports general obligation bond debt service payments. Levy increases are not restricted, however, the outstanding general obligation bond debt limit is restricted. The general obligation authorization was passed in November of 2008. The levy process, the levy is set during the budget process. Again, it's, the limit is set by the state statute. It is determined by the net assessed valuation, which is determined by the Pinal County Assessor's Office. They provide us with that information, and we calculate based on the levy that we are proposing, divided by the net assessed valuation, to determine the rate, is how that is calculated. The two property tax levies proposed during the budget process was $4.784.5 per $100 of valuation for the primary and $1.400.5 per $100 of valuation for the secondary levy. The fiscal year 1718 levy for primary property taxes equates to $11,704,000, which is an increase of $705,299 from fiscal year 1617. We held the rate associated with the net assessed valuation consistent with what it was in 1617. The increase in the taxes are due to the increases in property values. The secondary rate levy for fiscal year 1718 is $3,426,003. That rate actually decreased from fiscal year 1617. So as an example, for the levy calculation, this is only based on residential properties. If you take the net assessed value, which again, is obtained from the County Assessor's Office, divide it by the 10% assessment ratio, that's how you get the net assessed value. So in our example, $100,000 would be a net assessed value of $10,000. You multiply that by the primary property tax rate, and for every $100,000 house, you would have $478.45 in primary tax. Using that same calculation, applying the secondary rate, you would get $140.05 in secondary tax for a total tax bill of $618.50. Staff recommends that the mayor and council pass the ordinance 17-08, levying separate amounts to be raised for primary and secondary property tax levies upon each $100 of assessed valuation of property subject to taxation with the City of Maricopa for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018.
Thank you. Council, any questions on that? As we've talked many, many times before and done at the last session, where we have done all the previous pieces to this, as far as the required votes for the state budget, especially our budget that is required by the state law, I should say, this is the final piece. So any concerns or questions on that? Questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve, please?
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second? I'd like to move to a roll call.
Councilwoman Gussie?
In favor.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapados?
Yes.
Councilmember Wade?
Yes.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Brenda, thank you. This takes us to item 10.3. The mayor and council shall here, shall consider accepting the 2017-2018 work plan. This is for discussion and action. Turn the time to you, City Manager Rose.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to present the proposed work plan to you for 2017-2018. As you know, this document represents several months of work that was put into it, starting back in December of 2016, and certainly culminating with the budget that was recently approved. The work plan was drafted based upon the priorities and initiatives that were, are identified in the 2040 Vision Document that has been accepted or approved by the city council. The document is laid out with six tabs. Each of those tabs represents a different priority, and each of the projects under that represents how we intend to advance that priority for this fiscal year. The six priorities that were established, most of those priorities have areas of emphasis. And my intention is not to go through each of the projects that are being proposed, but mostly to hit the highlights. But in particular, I want to speak on the areas of emphasis. For planned, or, I'm sorry, well-planned quality growth and development, the areas of emphasis highlight land use, housing, and availability. As you know, we're moving forward with the housing plan currently. Transportation, water, wastewater utilities, environment stewardship, and flood mitigation technology, infrastructure, and regional commitments. And as you review the proposed work plan, you will see that the projects hit on each of those areas of emphasis. 347 Transportation Study is a project that we're still moving forward with and is proposed in this work plan. As you know, the RTA will have a significant impact on our ability to make improvements, both to 347, as well as to the Val Vista Corridor. So both of those projects are intended to move forward this year. Pursuing the centralized flood management study, we hope to work with Pinal County. We have a tentative agreement with them to conduct the study. We will encourage them, once the RTA has been resolved, to try and move up that project. Coordinate Pinal County Government Alliance. The mayor is chairing that group this year, and they have strongly supported the regional stormwater agency. So we will be coordinating the mayor's efforts with that group. Implement area transportation plan, coordinate the CIP development arterial improvements. As I go through these, if there's any particular project that you might have a question on, please don't hesitate to stop me. We have the department directors that are here if I'm not able to respond to a question. The temporary payment improvements for public safety, as you know, we have some areas within our city that need to be improved. We just purchased a new ladder truck, cost over $1 million. We want to make sure that... We want to make sure that our streets don't cause any damage to that truck, as well as to our other public safety pieces of equipment. Assist in the coordination of the State Route 347 Overpass. That project, while it's being headed by ADOT, we are very involved in the outreach efforts. As you know, we've created a website. The person that is spearheading that project as for us, the outreach, is our Economic Development Director, Denise Earhart. We have created also a hotline number, so at any time, if any person, any of the businesses, in fact, anyone in the city has an issue related to that project, they have one person to contact, one number to dial. And the website, we are trying to make sure that we keep it current, accurate. We certainly will do a good job once the actual construction starts. Right now, it's not as consistent as I would like. That's only because we're in the pre-construction phase, and so there are times when there are laps in work that is occurring. Conduct transportation corridors and connectivity studies. Public Works is heading that. Establish aesthetic standards for right-of-way. This is a carryover from this fiscal year's work plan. Update the engineering standards. Facilitate a smooth flooring network. Also up under this priority, establishing truck routes. That's something that will get a high priority from us this fiscal year, making sure that we minimize the damage on this, on all of our streets, and provide trucks, drivers with routes that can really accommodate their trucks. Update our city code is moving forward. Assist the coordination for flood control district and feasibility. Monitor the Corps of Engineers Laura Santa Cruz River. Study and recommend a course of action. As you know, we are highly reliant on the Corps of Engineers to, at some point, come out with their numbers. We are certainly interested in what FEMA's reactions will be to those numbers. We plan to work very closely with both of those agencies, as well as the Laura Santa Cruz River Alliance, to ensure that, as best we can, we minimize the impact on our residents and businesses. Update the 2006 subdivision ordinance and development annexation strategy. Update redevelopment area plans, implement city center plan. We're going to talk a little bit about this probably tomorrow, as we talk about our economic development strategy. Creating a small lot design standards. Increasingly, what we're seeing is smaller and smaller homes that are working well within the market, smaller and smaller lots, which means higher and higher densities typically. And it's not the densities that are the major concern for us, it's making sure that as we grow, we grow smart and that we grow safe. And we think that the small lot design, by putting out front what standards our developers will need to meet in order to construct these small homes, I think is a prudent thing to do. Create community facility district policy. More and more developers are using this tool as a way of financing the infrastructure for their development. We've got to get our arms around it, provide you with a recommended policy on when and if it is ever appropriate to use. Creating a housing plan, again, we're moving forward with that. The City Maricopa Transit Demand Study, that's being headed up by Martin in Development Services, and installation of bus shelters, and that's a project that's a carryover from this fiscal year, our last fiscal year as well. Up under Economic Development, we're scheduled to meet tomorrow to have a in-depth discussion about the economic development strategy. The areas of emphasis is a diverse and sustainable economy, a climate of rich educational opportunities for all, responsive and high-quality services and process support. The initiatives, our projects that we have up under this priority is making sure that we do a good job with the recruitment of quality companies, implementing the ED Strategic Plan, once that's been accepted, producing the business beat, attending sales mission, participate in negotiations. Those are with development agreements when it's appropriate to do so, partnering with the educational institutions. Coordinating with Maricopa Center for Entrepreneurs, that is our business incubator program to identify what are the outcomes that we are seeking there, to establish performance measurements for that operation, and making sure that we are achieving those outcomes. Business support, develop business marketing materials. City on land development, as you know, we have two large parcels, the 18 acres that is abutting the Copper Sky Development, as well as the Australia Gin. We'll be talking tomorrow about how you would like us to move those projects forward, whether it's time to do requests for qualifications so that we can facilitate development on those parcels. Quarterly broker breakfast is something that Denise is intending to kick off, coordinating business retention and expansion visits. For SR 347, business outreach and support, a beautification project, that's something I've asked Denise to take a look at, whether the businesses there are willing to partner with the city on a beautification project, recognizing that the right-of-way is still within ADOT's responsibility, but starting that discussion about whether it makes sense to, a couple of things. One is to start looking at the city taking over that right-of-way. Secondly, whether it makes sense to try and do some sort of significant entry project beautification along the entire street. Establishing performance measurements, ongoing smart gov training and expansion, coordinating the Second Saturday Market. I would highlight for the Second Saturday Market, that is certainly an activity that I think could be conducted either by faith-based or a school organization. That's one that we will continue to coordinate, but we will take a backseat and let those organizations actually be the primary coordinator of that event. Community resources and quality of life amenities. The areas of emphasis is park, recreation, leisure, cultural history, historical worship, and community-oriented facilities and programs. Libraries, quality health services and facilities, and cemeteries are under this priority. As you know, you recently funded the closed captioning project, assistant to the City Manager, Jennifer Brown will be moving that initiative forward. Also, the website redesign, Revive the Maricopa in Motion, will be handled by Community Services. Explore whether there is an interest in doing a car show, another event for the city, as well as a pet parade. That might be exciting, though.
Councilmember Chapados has a question.
Mr. Rose, one of the things that we've talked about in the past, as I'm seeing a very much continued effort to provide programs and activities for our residents from a special event perspective, I'd also want to make sure that we continue to address establishing the temporary vendor permit, so that more of these mom-and-pop home-based business shops can participate for craft shows, events, whatever it happens to be. And I know we have some challenges with the Department of Revenue, but I want to make sure that that gets also included in this work plan.
Will do. Yes, Councilwoman Gussie.
And while we're here, I just wanted to mention, it brought up to mind the closed captioning, just to making sure that all the important documents that go out to the public, or important information that go out to the public, go both out in English and Spanish, to make sure that our Spanish-speaking population is getting the equal opportunity to get the information as our English-speaking population.
Moving forward, pursuing the CAPRA certification, that's one that we may come back and revisit with you. It's very time and resource-intensive, not sure whether we would do an excellent job with that at this point. Right now, recommending that it be left on the work plan, but that may be something that we end up asking to amend going forward. Coordinating the volunteer recognition, the FORCE Boot Camp Program, I don't know if any of you have visited Copper Sky and participated in one, is tortureous, my view is just amazing. But we're moving forward with that. We couple that with a veterans program, which seems to be getting good results. Ongoing smart gov training and expansion with Development Services. Up under Safe and Livable Communities, there were areas of emphasis, there was a clear vision and goals that were established. And so, instead of going through these, I'll just kind of flip through it unless you have There are several programs, some of these are new, some of these are carryover. One that I would highlight is the Battalion Safety Officers. As you know, this was an issue that, item that was approved as a part of this year's budget process. So we'll be, Chief Lefler will be moving forward with that project. Also, as you know, in the capital improvement program that you approved, the replacement of a fire engine, that's about $900,000, so no small amount. But I think that we're going to try and improve our apparatuses for our, whether it's a ladder truck, or pumper trucks, our police vehicles, to ensure that as we are responding in emergency situations, we don't have to be concerned with whether our equipment is going to break down. Over the next couple of years, we need to continue to invest, or I will certainly recommend that we continue to invest heavily until we get our fleet to where it needs to be. Updating our code enforcement process, that's being headed by Martin Scribner. Providing comprehensive services to the community, providing the comprehensive communication center with our dispatch area, our officer wellness, and the Kalia certification. I'd like to highlight technology and policing. If you recall, when this item was first presented to you, it was simply to look at cameras, the use of cameras in policing. Chief Stahl has expanded that, and will now look at all of technology in policing, provide a report that will be provided to you. School safety and collaboration will continue. We have some issues there, where, as you know, we weren't successful, or the school wasn't successful in getting the grant for the SROs. Chief Stahl believes still that those officers should continue to be in the schools. We're going to end up meeting with the school superintendent, Dr. Chestnut, to have a discussion regarding what type of support the school can provide. Ultimately, we'll end up providing you with a report that says, here's what we're recommending for the future. I don't think that we'll be recommending pulling those officers this year. What they will happen is that they will simply become a part of the, all of the officers that are within our police department, and Chief Stahl has the authority and flexibility to dispatch those individuals as he believes is appropriate. Up under Community Pride, Service, and Relationships, the areas of emphasis are community image and brand, community engagement, volunteering, and involvement, and vital regional relationships. Here, there is a project that I want to add, no, I think it's up under a later, a later priority. For this one, it's the Maricopa Citizens Leadership Academy, that's being coordinated through the City Manager's Office. The State of the City Address, that's really the mayor's main project, one of his main projects that he works with staff in coordinating. So we will help in that effort. Public information and marketing, we'll continue to do that. Our quarterly newsletter will also continue to coordinate the age-friendly Maricopa out of the City Manager's Office for this fiscal year. Our Veteran Affairs Committee will coordinate that, will conduct two town halls, conduct a youth town hall, Arts and Cultural Task Force, draft a report on the need for community services mascot. Also, I would like to add at this point, one other project, we also coordinate the Cultural Affairs Committee, and so that project will be added to our work plan. Fiscal policies and management, here, it doesn't have areas of emphasis, but it does have a clear vision. It identifies several goals, just highlighting, making sure that there is understanding by the community, maintaining a community in which all residents, businesses, and visitors are safe, achieving a more equitable distribution and diversification of our tax revenues, aggressively pursuing all available funding from grants and other services, exploring options that recapture or reduce the cost of providing municipal services throughout the city. So the cost of government, major issue as it relates to this particular priority. We have the annual retreat that will be coordinating, both the City Council as well as the executive team, creating a legislative platform, managing the contracts for our lobbyists, both state and federal, still coordinating risk management. We're hopeful that we're able to move forward with a franchise agreement with Southwest that, we've had discussions about having it on the November ballot. That might change, because that project's not moving forward as fast as what I would like. Establishing a performance management system and addressing copper sky funding imbalance. The annual CIP and operating budget preparation, we'll continue to work with finance in preparing those documents. Finance has the responsibility for putting together a comprehensive annual financial report, or the CAFER. Hiring a new accountant that the Mayor and Council approved this year, exploring the formation of the Pearl Foundation, that would be a fundraising arm for community services, and evaluating special events processes. And we will need to add also, ensuring that we do the, evaluating the business license process. That's being headed by Martin at this point, but I do agree that adding it to our work We're going to look at field sponsorship, analyzing our current fees, maximizing the use of Munis, although it's not the most user-friendly software. We are heavily invested in it, and so we're going to have to end up making it work for us. Continuing to coordinate the Safety Committee, as you know, that is getting good return on a very small investment, as our, the funds that we have to pay for insurance continues to be reduced. And supervisor training and development, HR will be heading those. Completing our class and comp study, we're going through a process of making sure that all of our employees are in the right class and compensated fairly. HR is heading that up. Continuing our wellness program, that has become very popular and has gotten, I think, significant return on our small investment. Updating our personnel policies, BCC training by the city clerk, as well as the volunteer lunch that you've directed that we do each year. Preparing inaction manuals, it looks as though we're going to have a ballot question in November. Cyber security will be handled by IT. We're constantly under attack, and Kerry does a great job with protecting us. Data center power upgrade, improving our desktop support. Those are only a few of the projects now. Those are the bulk of the projects that we will be working on. that we will be working on this fiscal year. As I stated, we went through most of this in great detail during your retreat back in December. So I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Chapados.
Thanks, Gregor, for that presentation. One thing I'd like to see, and I'd like counsel to consider. We're finally at the stage where, you know, this year our focus was very much on providing personnel resources to our various departments that needed them. I'd like to make sure that in the future, as we move forward, and hopefully we see our financial situation improve steadily over time, that we open up some internal opportunities to do some mentoring and some skill set advancement training for possible upward movement by staff within our own departments. I think we've got a lot of talent here for a variety of reasons. There hasn't been a lot of upward movement, but I think we're finally starting to see that, whether it's shadowing, whether it's being able to participate in projects, do some research, whatever. I'd like to see us maximize that, so as a way of recognizing the talents and the skill sets that we have here, and also retaining some very, very good people. I'd like to see that considered as part of your work plan.
Any other questions, comments, counsel, on this? Like I said, we've gone over this extensively, but it is the culmination of the whole thing. And so with that, I think we need an action on it. So can we have a motion to approve, please?
Some of it.
A motion, is there a second? Motion and second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, City Manager Rose. Thank you for all your work in that.
He got cheers.
That brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. Again, we'd like to thank the Mandela Fellows for being with us. Counsel, unfortunately, you're not done. You get to go and have an executive session and discuss more things. So again, we appreciate all of the participation this evening. Also wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Chapados, who pretty much spearheaded the 10-year anniversary with the police department and all the staff. So again, many thanks to Councilmember Chapados for that, and we appreciate it. And with that, as we close, can I have a motion to move to each session, please? Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Appreciate it.